Are we live then? Ready, okay, thank you.
Any sec, go.
Good evening, everyone, we'd like to call our meeting to order and welcome everyone out to our 6:30 Planning Commission meeting. All of the commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Spires. She is excused. Will be having some medical procedures here and needs to prepare for that. We'd like to open up for any public comment at this time, item B on our agenda. Not seeing any one of the public present, we will conclude with that and then move to item C, presentation and reports. Mr. Cooper, please.
Thank you, just a reminder, the Ichiban sushi open house tomorrow at four, so if you can make that, that'll be great, great new addition to the city. And then, as I mentioned previously, we are receiving applications for some new businesses that will we're kind of reviewing it now in terms of the scope of work that it is part of the project as to whether or not a site plan is going to be necessary, so you may or may not see that as the planning commission, but we'll certainly keep you updated on on that progress for that new business in the family center.
Great, nice. Your microphone's off. Up is on.
Up is on?
Okay. Get my glasses out and make sure that I know what I'm doing here. All right. Did you have any update for us on the city council actions?
Yeah, so this is in response to your request as a commission to to get a feedback of the things that have transpired here and moved forward and in general, some of the things that have happened are happening at the council level, so. Item one is the Ken Garf site plan, as you recall, you made a favorable recommendation to the city council for its approval. They appreciated your comments about the parking and some other things that were discussed here, the traffic and the lighting, things like that, so I think that was helpful for them as they considered that that was approved. So they're ready to go. The Kent Hill Peacock Ridge is something that didn't come to this commission per se, but it is something that has been in front of the commission in recent years. Peacock Ridge is a PRUD up on 1200 and it's approved for eight homes now, it's owned by Mr. Kent Hill and this city staff made a proposal to the city council to purchase that subdivision for a little under appraised value, it was appraised at $540,000 and the purchase price was $495,000, so that's something that we feel is important in terms of protection of that hillside, even though it was an approved project back in the you know, 18, 19, 20, 21, that was kind of the span of the project. It really is a project that would be difficult to build and in doing so, it would represent a lot of risk both to the builder, the new homeowners and the adjacent homeowners to the bottom, in our opinion. So the city council approved a purchase and sale agreement for that and we're in contract, so to speak. And the closing is set for September 30th. If all things go well, the city will close, take ownership and then I think the fun part for the commission and staff is that we get to look at the project and think of what it can become, so obviously we want to restrict and prohibit any building on it, but is it a nature park, is it just conservation easement and we leave it wild, is it something that we can utilize the cul-de-sac for parking and put a trailhead there and out and back? There's lots of ideas I think we can come up with both as a commission and staff that can utilize that hillside in a much better way and get a little bit of value out of our money.
How big a property is that? How much land is that involved?
Kent Hill's land is four acres and then the city already owns more land to the northwest there. So the entire hillside is owned by this, would be owned by the city and I want to say it would be close to eight or nine acres.
Eight, eight acres?
That butts up against Weber Basin water too, right? They're on the flat part and then above them is Hill Air Force Base's property land.
So hillside, Davis, Weber Canal Company, more hillside and then Hill Air Force Base. And the last item there, Chair, is the pending ordinances. I mentioned briefly that we were using a unique tool that's allowed for in state law that gives a city the ability to bypass traditional processes of planning commission recommendations and public hearings to have the city council enact a temporary zoning ordinance for the sake of dealing with certain issues that are important to cities that need to be dealt with immediately. We proposed two of those to the council last week, one for the purpose of creating a pending ordinance around short-term rentals and the other for the purpose of creating a pending ordinance around rehab centers and what was the other term, residential treatment facilities. And they, not only did they deny them, they actually voted to take them off the agenda. So now we know the city council has no tolerance for pending ordinance. So that means we're still we need to address those two items. It's just going to accelerate our work because what a pending ordinance does is it sets aside certain restrictions that you place in those pending ordinances and in these cases, we propose to restrict both short-term rentals and rehabilitation centers across all zones in the city for a period of 180 days. And that would give us time, that would have given us time to work out an ordinance. We still can do all those things, we just don't have the benefit of having that that kind of
Wiggle room.
Free time, you know? So we'll be working to provide you some language and we'll just go through the normal process of establishing an ordinance.
Okay, great. Glad to see that we're getting some progress on those two items because I know that they're becoming more concerning within the city, you know, that we have something in place for to address those.
Right, and the most concerning is that we have zero language that regulates either one of those. And so I think that was the urgency behind the pending ordinance, but now we know the council prefers the traditional method.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear feedback from the city council and that we are hopefully in line with their thoughts and actions, so. We'll next move to item D, consent items. Consideration for meeting minutes from our work session and regular meeting, August 13th and 24. Any discussion on those commissioners? If not, a motion would be in order?
Yeah, there was just a slight change that Michelle made, there was a sentence that wasn't finished and she went ahead and fixed that, so. Those are correct now, so I'd like to make a motion to approve our meeting minutes from the August 13th, 2024 work session and regular meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. We'll next move to our action items E. Motion to untable the extension request for Goldcrest Homes LLC.
I make a motion that we untable the extension request for Goldcrest Homes LLC.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Can this one be just by voice or does it have to be?
I think this is a roll call vote.
This would be a roll call?
Is that right, Michelle?
To untable?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So we have the consideration number two of Coleman View Estate subdivision plat approval, extension request for a six-month period to February 15th, 25. Coleman View Estates PRUD subdivision located approximately 5368 South, 1050 West Riverdale, Utah is requested by Goldcrest Homes. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, so as you recall, last meeting, Goldcrest Homes made a request to the commission for a plat extension. Their original plat was approved as a three-phase plat, but as a single, as a single approval. It was approved in August of 2023 and so prior to the August deadline of one year, they made a request for that plat extension that was brought before you. There was some discussion about the subdivision amenities being in phase three and whether or not those items were bonded for in association with the other bonds and performance assurances that were provided or required on the subdivision. We determined and discussed the fact that they were not, but they could be and should be based on our code and the development agreement as well as your conditions and so you took action to table the consideration of the request for the plat extension until today, subject to the developer working with the city to get those bonds in place. Thaddeus is here today with Goldcrest Homes and so you can feel free to speak to him, but I can tell you that he and his team has been working diligently to ensure that happened. Unfortunately, we're not at a point tonight where we can say that those bonds have been placed or or secured. What that means is that it comes in the form of a letter of credit issued by a bank and in order to do that, there's a process that the bank has, in this case, it's Bank of Utah, is that right? And they use numbers that Thaddeus team produces that are engineers' estimates of the improvements, those were the estimates that were given to the city at time of approval. And so Thaddeus job has been to allocate where those expenses go based on the open space amenities in phase three versus phase one things and so he's been working on those with the city. The city's still reviewing some of those things, so we just quite haven't gotten to the point where his bank has issued that final stamped and secured letter of credit. I anticipate we're very, very close, it just didn't happen tonight. And so for, so your consideration is to is to grant the request for extension subject to the bond being in place and Thaddeus and his team working with the city to do that or to re-table this until another future date in which we can conclude that work as originally required. So I'll turn the time back over to you to ask any questions of Thaddeus or myself.
Okay, thank you. We'd invite you to step forward and again, if you'd please identify yourself and city of residence, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Thaddeus Falls, I reside in Orem, Utah. Excited to be here, I've been working very diligently, as Brandon stated, with himself and city staff to be able to provide the adequate amounts for bonding for the project enhancements, we've included all of the amenities and landscaping into that as well, just to be sure that everything does get installed in that timely manner. We have provided these amounts to the city, they've had them for about a week, obviously, reviewal times, approvals take those take time and can vary depending on the city's workload and capacity. I'd like to just personally ask that this be considered for a conditional approval based upon those amounts being approved. I stand behind the numbers, they're the exact numbers that I presented to the city a year, two years ago in our engineers' estimates, in fact, I've revised them and added additional costs as to where it felt necessary and bids reflect that, so. Things haven't gotten cheaper, but we do have the bank behind us and ready to go. They just are anticipating an approved amount, we hate to go to the bank to give them one amount suggesting that the city and us have agreed, but without full approvals. If for whatever reason the city were to come back and say this needs to be changed or amount adjusted, they have to go through their committee again, they have to then notarize said documents again and it becomes quite a lengthy process. As Brandon said, I think we're there, we had a conversation today, myself and the city engineer, he said he's reviewed it and feels good about it. I don't know what kept him from giving an approval if he had other work that was just a little more demanding, maybe onsite items, but this seems to be a simple administrative item that I think we've pretty much overcome. And again, we're we're just asking for conditional approval because if we have to wait to come back to then go back to the bank, that just adds an additional two weeks to when we wanted to have everything recorded in about three days, we're looking at, or September 3rd, excuse me, beginning of September. And two weeks time is very valuable for us, time is everything, so. If you would take that into consideration, I'm also open to answering any questions that you guys might have as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions that you would like to ask?
I feel like this is a little bit different than we discussed in our work session meeting. So I'm trying to figure out where where we're at in the process of
What's different?
You expound, yeah, well, well, just that I thought we were waiting on the bank and Mr. Falls is saying that we're waiting on city approval in order to get approval from the bank, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, so the bank is the one who actually takes the numbers that Thaddeus creates that comes through us and we look at the approved plat and the improvements and the original engineer's estimate, that's reviewed by myself, the city engineer, the public works director and some others. And then once we are comfortable with that those numbers accurately reflect the cost of the work that is being bonded for, then we give that back to Thaddeus and then he takes it to the bank. So the the letter of credit draft has been created, but the bank hasn't stamped it and sent it back to us.
Okay, so the city has fulfilled their piece or?
No, like I, like he said, and as I mentioned in the meeting, the, the this is an activity that takes both the review of the city and the providing of the numbers by the by the developer and so we've been trying to get those numbers approved, they they did change as of today because based on some of that approval, there was other things that were adding into it, so it's still in flux, we haven't come to an agreed-upon amount that accurately reflects those improvements.
What was the bank's feedback without getting too detailed as far as their concerns? Everything okay with them?
Yeah, no, the bank, the bank is eager to get this taken care of. I don't know if you guys have seen their signs up, I think they got taken down while improvements are happening, but they're excited for the project to move forward, we've worked with Bank of Utah for over 20 years. Very reputable and they, they just want an email written approval saying the amount that we've suggested we bond for is approved by the city and then they'll go through the process. Like Brandon said, we worked through the forms, he did an excellent job, he's very instrumental in getting the forms in place and everything correctly, after that exchange happened, numbers were provided and we're just, we're just waiting for the green light on the numbers and although a item was taken into consideration today and readjusted, it was an addition that we were happy to make and we we thought that it would be considered a vertical component, so we were saving that item for what would be considered construction cost for homes versus improvement costs, but that's easily, that was easily resolved and we appreciate them for finding that.
Mr. Cooper, do you feel like city staff is close? Like what is the timeline for city staff to feel confident in giving the green light to the bank?
As I mentioned, we're really close. That work has been ongoing for a number of days now and so we both just talked to the engineer this afternoon and he had some other things he was going to look into, but he didn't have any glaring issues that that he could see. The numbers that we had originally were checking out for the most part, he hadn't gone through all of them, it's a two, three-page document. So yeah, I, like I said, I feel pretty good about where we're at, I don't know of a reason why we would have any major issues with the number, maybe a few tweaks here and there. I don't know why the bank wouldn't issue, that's kind of the big question, right, is it's entirely up to the bank's credit committee to determine if they're going to issue the letter of credit on behalf of Goldcrest Homes. So we don't know if that's going to happen, even if we do provide an approval on the numbers. But as Thaddeus said, they're a reputable bank, they do this a lot, I'm sure. You've banked with them for a long time, so I don't have any reason to believe that they wouldn't. But they, they haven't and so there's still some, some risk there.
Do you have like a, a timeline that you could throw out there, I mean, are we talking like a couple of days, are we talking maybe a week or two?
Couple of days, I grabbed that in when he walked in and I mentioned that, I think we're within a couple of days of having our work wrapped up and then it would go to the bank, but I think the credit committee would meet prior to the next planning commission, is that what you're trying to work out?
Yeah, I would hope so. Their schedule fluctuates, but our representative has stated that he'll do whatever he can to be able to get this letter of credit put in place as soon as we get approvals. Traditionally, they do go through a process where the committee meets once every two weeks. I think we're at that point where if we were tabled, we probably would get a committee meeting in between. But I do believe that with a conditional approval, we'd be able to wrap this up and once the bank has a green light, they're ready to hit the ground running, I think they're just waiting on the city's thumbs up, so.
Brandon, what's the concern, can you shed what it is with the city engineer that's his concern or is it just that he hasn't completed his complete look at the documents, is there something that's holding him up in specific?
The there was multiple submissions of the engineer's estimate back when the approval was made, so he, it took him a minute to finally get through get to the accurate numbers, but I think that coupled with the workload and just the process of going through all the numbers to make sure they're accurate has led to where we're at. But this is typical for him, you know, we don't expect super speed turnaround when we ask of these things with our engineer on anything, that's why we have the processes that we do and so I think he's within our expectation. There's also another review by Sean Douglas, again, he has, he's within probably his typical review time, it's only been a couple of weeks and so he's complete, I think he was done yesterday with it, for the most part, he did bring up that additional thing today. So I, I wouldn't say we're outside the realm of normal for these types of things.
No issues with the police or the fire department that's been resolved prior?
They wouldn't, yeah, they wouldn't have any, any effect on this at all, yeah, it's just
Because their approvals were already done on the original? Yeah, on the original.
It's just really a a fact of are the numbers going to accurately represent the work that we potentially would have to do ourselves if we drew on that letter of credit? And so there's some work that goes into that and rightly so, we want to be accurate because if that default ever did happen, we want to have an appropriate amount of money on that secured letter of credit in order for us to draw against to complete the improvements and not have to come out of pocket to do that.
Thaddeus, what what hardships would it cause you if, if this was to be tabled again for another two weeks? What, how would that affect you in a hardship manner?
On a personal note, I don't know if I should dive into too big of details, but contractually speaking, I am being held to a recording date standard, or a recording date has been set for September 3rd. There are penalties, daily penalties, financial penalties that'll follow after that, I was really hoping that we could have wrapped this up a couple of weeks ago, but to Brandon's point, you do have to go through those numbers with a fine comb. I went through those numbers with the finest of combs and it took me a couple of days to make sure that they were ready to go to the city and even after my couple of days, one item did pop up, so. To be as transparent as possible, it will, it will have a hardship. A hardship that I don't think any of us would probably want to come up to.
September 3rd is one week from today, is that correct?
Exactly.
So that doesn't I mean, even if we make a conditional approval, that doesn't give much time to go through the process that you're talking about in order to get that recorded, does it?
With our representative, Jack at Bank of Utah, he's one of the higher-ups and out of anybody there in the organization, I would have full trust in him and Kelly Crane to be able to, they'd be able to turn this around. I don't know what type of I guess administrative actions they could take to expedite this, but I've asked them if that's on the table. It was on the table last week if we had gotten approvals from the city that they were going to expedite it. And since that conversation, I believe that their position remains the same, that they would do what they can, so.
Well, and there's going to be a holiday.
Labor Day, the 2nd.
Yeah, Monday.
It's gonna muddy that up as well.
So essentially, you would have to have this completed by Friday.
Exactly, so.
In three days, is that even a possibility? Because you said it would probably be a few days for the city to even get their stamp on before it went to the bank.
And that's a great question, I spoke with Todd Freeman for a pretty, pretty long while this afternoon, as Brandon stated, and we went over what would be a 10,000-foot view of the numbers to see if anything stood out and he said at that point, no, and he confirmed with me this afternoon, I think I can get you an approval by the end of the day, if not first thing tomorrow morning, was his words in our phone call conversation, so.
So once we receive that from Todd and all the, and Sean and everybody, which if that's the case, then we would need to have Steve and Stacy look at it because it's a financial instrument. And one thing I haven't mentioned either in the work session or now is that there is a current performance assurance in place now in the form of a cash bond that bonds against phase three improvements and so part of this letter of, of credit is going to replace that and add to it the other improvements that we're talking about and actually some other things. Remember, we talked about just doing one instrument and so so that's going to take Stacy and Steve some time to review, we can hopefully get them to do that tomorrow if we have the approved numbers and complete that by Friday, but I can't make those commitments.
So really, you're only down to, we're playing with three days here is what we have to have it all wrapped up.
Pretty much, yeah.
It sounds like it's probably going to take
Exactly, longer.
The amount of time just to get city approval.
Right, that's minimum.
We are not fast.
So we're really having three days to get everything wrapped up. That's kind of an unrealistic expectation in reality, isn't it?
Honestly, from a city perspective, I can't speak to how the administrative side of things is handled, Brandon would be the one to lean on there and if he's saying it'll take a couple of days, then from the city's side it would. From the bank, in our last letter of credit that we assembled with the Bank of Utah, I presented a number to Jack, hopped on the phone, he went and drove and had that presented day of, went and got it notarized. We had it back to the city by Monday before our meeting, so it is possible from a bank standpoint, again, I guess that would just rely on the city, that's why I would ask for a conditional approval based on the amounts being approved, but if the planning commission feels otherwise, then I understand. I've, I've done what I can to present the numbers and I stand behind the numbers, so.
Well, and if we tabled it, we're putting it off another week. So there's that to consider too.
That would be September 10th.
September 10th.
So we have a week here that is in, is it's out of the realm. It's not even in the spectrum to be in the picture. If you will, Friday's really the deadline, correct, Brandon, as far as having this wrapped up?
In order to meet their date of the 3rd, yeah.
And the city's.
But, but then too, if we, if we postpone him all the way until the 10th and he was able to get everything put together by the 4th or 5th, his daily fees would be less. So you know, if it's not just the 3rd, I mean, it'd be nice to have it by the 3rd so he didn't have any any, any fees that he had to pay, but you know, but those fees are added every day and so the longer that that process takes, the more his fees are.
When, what was the date that the bond was originally agreed upon?
Which, which bond?
The bond that we're talking. The bond that we're talking about.
So the bond that we would be placing for the amenities was captured. The agreed amount is actually what we have sent over and is what we're, the city is still reviewing.
What was, yeah, but what was the date that we decided that you were going to provide bond?
That was captured in a development agreement.
That was the last meeting, the 13th or 14th?
You're asking if there was a deadline?
But originally.
Original, she's talking about when the development was approved so that you had
Oh, August 15th of 2023, when the plat was approved, the development agreement was approved.
I guess my question is, why at this point are we running right into the deadline when that was discussed a year prior?
And that was, that was the findings of the planning commission in the last meeting when we had noticed that although everything seemed to be in line and internally and administratively us working with the city, we had gone through much, much larger obstacles for performance agreements and other bonding items and and water amounts. That this part of the development agreement was overlooked by both parties until we'd come to come back together and reconvened on August 13th. And by August 14th, I was in the office preparing numbers and I had everything wrapped up, ready to go, basically in a matter of two days. I was just waiting for forms, but to Brandon's point, those forms are binding contracts and we need to make sure that those are good for both parties to proceed. So once the form was provided to us, numbers have been provided and and we're just waiting for the approvals. I hope that shines a little more light.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where, where was the breakdown?
I'm thinking what happened was that we identified the issue and discussed that. Told them that they would need to take care of that. Mike, at the time, was preparing everything and that the bond addressed. We identified that it had to be taken care of in the first phase and they were going to redraft everything. And then somehow, whether that slipped past us, but the bond was set in place for the sewer and the other improvements, but somehow it didn't capture the improvements for the amenities.
Well, it, although, is it, it is in the the agreement, right? The, I can't think of
Development agreement?
It is in the development agreement, so it was captured. It just as they went through the development agreement and, you know, put the bonds up to to the city. It was, it was overlooked as as an item that needed to be bonded to the city.
I think it was the handoff from Mike Eggit to Brandon Cooper where Mike was instrumental in getting the development agreement drafted, put in place and approved. Then we worked with Brandon on amending certain elements to improve the subdivision. And at that point, I think that item, fair to say, was was one that was overlooked. Although it is rather small in nature comparatively speaking to all of the improvement costs. I know the number off the back of my head, I could tell you how much the amenities are going to cost versus the infrastructure and it's, it's very minimal. But regardless, it was overlooked.
Yeah, that's correct. There was an amendment presented to the city council and that amendment had a number of changes to the original approval. One of those was the shifting of the amenities from phase one to phase three. And the language did require the bonding of that, it just wasn't captured in that first bond that has already been secured by cash, which will be replaced by this new bond that we're hoping to get approved here.
And I apologize for making you put so much consideration into this element. I think that sometimes these small hills turns into mountains and that's what I was trying to avoid, so apologies.
I, you know, I think the transparency is great, you know, clarifies a lot. But I think with Celeste's comment there, somewhere the breakdown occurred and it was totally missed is a big concern. You know, and that's the purpose of checking and checks and balances along the way. How did, what happened to cause that? Not pointing blaming fingers to anybody, but obviously it broke down. The system failed somewhere. And that's what we got now. We're faced with this critical deadline to make a decision or it's going to cost money daily. That's where we're at, I think, right now.
And we do our best as staff to respect these deadlines. We have no involvement in their establishment, so the September 3rd deadline was arbitrarily set by the developer and their and their partners. And so we, we try to respect that. We try to work diligently to meet these because we know that there are significant implications to some of these things. But at the end of the day, there's multiple cogs here that neither I nor Thaddeus control. And so we're just trying to make everybody's life go as easy as possible and sometimes that works really well and sometimes it doesn't. But at the end of the day, it's the, you know, it's, it's the dates that that we are given by them to to work against and we try our best to to accommodate that.
Right, and I think all of us would agree that we have interest in two parties. We have interest in developers who are building in Riverdale. We, we need developers, we need new homes, we need businesses. And we, we want you to be successful and also we have to look out for our residents' rights. And the reason that we have in our code that the amenities need to be completed first is because in the past, we've had some instances where they haven't been completed. And so now we've put that in the code, so our job is to make sure that we're doing our best to help you be successful and also that we're doing our best to make sure the residents who are going to buy those homes are going to have what they've been told that they're going to have. So now our decision is if we, if we go ahead and pass this through on condition of the bond being placed, are we, are we sure that we've done our part? And can we be assured that the bond will indeed be placed for the, that amount, that it, the proper amount? Or do we need to wait and have that provided for us and 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 make sure?
My understanding of a conditional approval would be that the extension would actually not be granted until that approval is is made, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so if we make it, if we make an additional, a conditional approval, that extension is still pending and subject to that bond being placed. And if that bond never gets placed, then the extension never gets realized.
And if I may offer one more consideration, part of what is at play here, as I mentioned, is that initial bond that is being replaced with this letter of credit as well as a bonded amount that's going to ensure that the incomplete items of phase one get complete, even though they're recording the subdivision. And so the recording of the subdivision actually won't be able to happen until that bond is in place, which won't, is all tied up into all of this, right? And so really, your action tonight is connected to that. And so I don't see a way for us to have all that done by, I guess, Tuesday. Maybe there's a way, but, you know, again, we're working with folks that won't be here Friday. And so if the goal is to record the plat on, what'd you say, the 3rd?
That's what I'm shooting for.
The bigger concern to the city, I think, via the Public Works perspective, is that that won't be allowed until the phase one improvements are bonded for. And if that's wrapped up in this, then it looks like that's going to be the holdup, not the commission's action tonight, in my opinion. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a philosophical question? If, when we, when we approve based on conditions, then what is, what is the point of approval? Because we could just approve everything based on conditions? Do you, do you see what I'm saying? Like, what is, why would we choose one over the other if we could just approve everything based on the conditions being met?
And it's a good point. It's really the topic of our next item on the agenda, which is when you receive preliminary site plans that were riddled with all kinds of of inaccuracies and incomplete items, and so you gave preliminary approval to that or conditional approval. It really made no sense, and so we're trying to change that tonight.
Still goes back in my mind that we're stuck on a certain date here. I mean, we're trying to get around the 3rd, or three days, I mean, by Friday, ultimately, at the end of the day, right now. And it don't sound realistic. Am I wrong in saying that? I mean, that's what we're hung up with, is trying to accommodate?
I, I think what it represents is minimizing penalties that the developer might have based on the assurances that we have the bond in place.
Correct.
Do we allow city staff to meet those conditional
Timeframes.
Approvals, you know, so that then they could move forward instead of having to wait until the 10th, which is going to incur an additional seven days when it could happen on the 5th and minimize those.
Now, is this something that's going to need to go to city council as well? No, okay.
Because the, the terms of the bond have already been set. And the only reason why you're talking about the bond is because it's now part of your consideration for the plat extension. And the plat extension is solely the commission's decision, not the council's. And again, I can't speak for others in the city, nor can I speak for Thaddeus, but there are still a number of steps that both the city has to take and the developer has to take in order to ensure that we have back to us a signed, sealed and delivered secure letter of credit. And that will be a condition of them recording the plat for the public improvements of, the incomplete public improvements for phase one. So I think there's a lot of things here that, that I think is possible, but again, I can't speak for my team and I'm sure Thaddeus is going to do everything he can to get his team to to work hard on it.
Any more than, anyone can speak for Bank of Utah and how fast that they're going to move on this.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of moving pieces. I do want to pause for a moment, though, and express my appreciation to you because the last time we had met, this really hadn't been addressed at all and you've done a lot of work in the last two weeks. You've done everything that you can on your part to move this process forward, so we do acknowledge that and appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can I propose something, Chairman? Just a wild idea here. What happens if we hold an emergency planning mission, commission meeting after the 3rd? After the holiday, after the 2nd, excuse me. If this is all resolved, we hear Brandon's got everything from the city's standpoint and everything from the Bank of Utah, before we have additional days added on and charges, once they give us the green light, can we say, let's have an emergency meeting and proceed?
We can, but we have to post that, don't we?
So one day is better than having multiple days. Is that a fair, to help both the city and Thaddeus there for, is that reasonable?
It's solely up to you. We would, again, need to to notice it. We would get everything that we are working on back from the bank, we give the green light and then we would want to notice it for 24 hours in advance and then we could meet, take action. It would be a short meeting.
But if, if we do that and we set a date and everything isn't in place, then we're going to cancel that meeting, right?
I would recommend that you don't set the date until everything is in place.
Okay, so you would call us and say, we need an emergency meeting.
Okay, that's right.
But let's look at some timetables here. The 5th, many of us will be, well, I guess we would be back that evening. We could participate. Some of us are going to be participating in a conference down in Salt Lake.
And I will be out of town, so I won't be able to participate any, at all.
I will be out of town until the, I won't be back until the 5th morning.
So that leaves two of us out with Amy out as well.
Amy is out as well.
So that's three.
So will that give, would it even be possible to have a quorum at that point?
You would have four.
You would have to, it would have to almost be unanimous. They'd have to have a majority and they would all have to be in full agreement in order for it to pass because of those absent.
We'd have to have at least five here.
You have to have at least five, five is a quorum.
Is that right? Four?
Four, four is a quorum, but they would all have to be in agreement.
So we would have a full quorum if those three that was not here could assure that the emergency meeting, they'd be here. We'd have a quorum.
Could also participate on the phone or like a WebEx.
That's a possibility.
If someone needed to.
Personally, I don't, I don't see an advantage to that if we were going to go that direction. I think that what we should do tonight, in my opinion, if we wanted to go that direction, would be just to grant the conditional approval. And because then he's saving another day, we have to do a 24 hour notice anyway. And so he's saving one more day that, that, you know, that 24 hour notice. And, you know, so if that's the purpose, the, the conditional approval would, in my opinion, would, would be a better solution if that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I think as was noted before, was that we could have done this initially in the last meeting. And thus, we wanted to ensure that that was in place and that was the purpose of, that some had considered that it was of import that we wait until we have that in place. But.
I think that being said, there also has been a lot of progress made, so I could see going either way.
Yeah. Which would then be a matter of a motion and the voice of the, the commissioners determining the decision on that motion.
Chair, can I ask a few questions here? So in the process of recording the plat for, it's just the phase one plat, correct?
Correct.
The printing of the Mylar is pretty perfunctory, you could do that at a moment's notice. Are there any signatures that are going to be required on the plat that might be difficult to obtain? Our mayor usually comes in once a week. That's not written in stone. We could probably get him to come in on his lunch break or do something out of the norm. Is there other signatures that need to be on the plat that I'm not aware of that may take a few days to get?
Based on my recollection of the plat, our engineering firm would sign and stamp. We would have, I believe, the mayor. Internally, it might have to go to fire.
No.
No. Michelle might know better. Michelle, Michelle can enlighten that.
You would have your engineer sign it and I believe someone from your company. And then our engineer would sign it, the mayor and the planning commission chair, and then I would notarize or attest and notarize it.
Okay, and to be able to expedite that, I've already talked to Ensign Engineering. I have a Mylar printed. It doesn't have signatures, but I could bring it in first thing tomorrow morning and have it passed around and prepared and ready to go. I'll do anything I need to do to make this deadline happen.
I've also taken things to the mayor as job to be signed, so that's a possibility, so.
Come in to sign before, but in my absence can the co-chair or the she's going to be laid up.
Won't be available either.
Yeah, and I really won't be back available until the 6th because I'll be at the conference on the 5th and I'll be out of town getting back late on the 4th.
And I'm not sure if Todd is available, given the holiday. I haven't talked to him about that. He'll need to sign. And I believe Sean signs as well, right?
It really feels like we're trying to pound a square peg into a round hole.
Yeah. I just don't think you can do it. Yeah, my, my inclination is just to table it until our next meeting on the 10th and
As much as we would really love
To do it, it's just that
For all this to go through, it just seems like there are so many pieces and we're asking a lot of, a lot of people and, and hoping for a lot of perfect outcomes in order to make it work.
I'm going to throw another wrench in that. We have three, I have three conferences this month in September, so there's two full weeks there I'll be gone. One of them is the week of the 10th. There is the week of the 24th, which is your other planning commission meeting, so that.
Okay, so if you're not here for the 10th, does that mean we can't?
You still have a meeting, but as far as getting signatures and things like that, I'll be gone the rest of that week.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. With all the holidays. With all the holidays and things like that, it just is a rough time. It's a rough time, so, is what it boils down.
So currently, we don't have any other items for the planning commission on the 10th, so as of today, prior to this discussion, we were thinking about canceling that, given Michelle's absence. We can still conduct a meeting. Michelle is irreplaceable, but we can find some person off the street to come in and...
Thaddeus, do it.
If need be, if need be, but I'm not as good as typing or as proficient.
Well, it will not be possible, basically, the 10th through the 24th, to collect the signatures needed, because you won't be here to notarize?
Um, I won't be here to attest, so I have to attest the mayor's signature.
Okay.
Or else it's not valid. We have, we have other notaries here, but I'm the only one that can attest.
Where, when will you return?
I will be gone.
And when will you leave, if I may ask?
Um, I'll be gone the 10th through the 13th, and then the 23rd through the 27th.
Because the Mylar is printed, so I'm more than, I'm more than able to bring that in tomorrow and leave it, and it's up to you guys' discretion, but I believe that it can be signed and notarized and withheld within the city until everything is complete, and then given to us to take to, or you guys.
You make the last signatures or record it.
We would make the last signatures for recording, and then we could take it in her absence, or, I don't know how else you would go about the recording of the plat?
September is a terrible month.
That could work, I mean...
Would that be an option?
Mm-hmm. And I wouldn't mind, I mean, next week with that conference, we'll, I'll be down, I'll be going to that as well, and the mayor will be down there, so I can coordinate with him too, if we need to.
Just bring it to the conference.
It seems like we could have a fully signed plat, sans the developer's signature, all of the bonding stuff in place by the 10th, to where you could feel comfortable untabling it and taking action on the request, and then on the 11th, you could sign it and record the plat.
It is light at the end of the tunnel. It just made the tunnel a little longer than I was hoping. I think conditionally, we can knock all of it out too, within a matter of days, but seeing that that decision is up to the commission, I will leave that in your guys' hands.
Seems very likely that it will not, that probably the 6th or the 7th would be the earliest, which is only a few days shy of the 10th.
Especially with the weekend and the holiday in between.
Well, to record a plat, it usually takes, you know, 12 hours or so typically, once Weber County receives that request, and then they usually get backed up from a holiday, so it's not unrealistic that it probably wouldn't possibly even get signed by Weber County until the 4th, at the very earliest, if it was turned in at a reasonable time on the 3rd. And in real estate, that's typically what it takes after a holiday.
I, I hear you. And the 4th, to me, sounds a lot better than the 10th.
And that's what I understand, is the concern of pushing that extra week out. And I, we all understand where he's, what it's coming from, so what makes the most sense? We're playing with a week here, trying to accommodate, and the week of the 9th is, everybody's busy, so that's pushing it out another week. And so that's where we're, we're up against the wall.
Well, it looks like for sure we could do the 10th.
Yeah, but he's, yeah, but the repercussions of what's going to come to him on the costs for a week, I'm trying to look at that issue as well. What would be the best scenario?
But I think what you're saying, though, is that we, we sure, hopefully, we'd be sure everything is in place by then. Right now, we're, none of us are known, unknown out there, so much unknown. We think this will be done, we think this is going to be done, when you get to that point, then you stop, in my opinion, you stop and you say, let's back up to what we know. We know it's not done yet. That's the final thing, it's not done yet.
Although I think an argument could be made too, for the amount of progress that has been made since our last meeting.
It's still not done.
True.
You still have the option of the emergency meeting, so if you choose to put it on the 10th, given that that's the most feasible option right now, given everything that we've talked about, but in the event that the signatures can be obtained and the bonds are all completed and placed, we, you still have that option, I could make a phone call saying, we're ready, whenever that date might be, let's say it's the 3rd, 4th, 5th, whatever, I could make that call to you, and then you could all decide if you either want to wait till the 10th, or have it sooner, based on availability.
That's also a commitment to the four that's going to be here for a unanimous decision.
Mm-hmm. One of which, will, will she be here next time? She won't?
Well, there's a possibility, Amy could just be online, and she could agree or not agree, because it's not like she's going to be in the hospital, she will be home, she would be able to reciprocate.
So I understand that, like, we don't really want to table something and, and then untable it, and then give what we could have just given two weeks ago, today. You know, we don't want to have the exception, what's the right wording, Brandon?
Rescinded?
Well, that too. No, but the, you know, where we would give the...
Contingent.
Contingent, thank you. The contingency that the bond isn't placed, like, we don't want to go that route. But I also feel like, given the timeframe of all this stuff and the effort that he has made, that, like, we're just playing with dates at this point, and if our final decision is that we're going to approve the extension, and we're just waiting for the little bond piece that, you know, we consider the contingent piece of it.
I would agree with you, Queen.
... is I will be totally unavailable until late on the 4th. I will have no cell phone, that's all.
That sounds good, actually.
Yeah. Calling that emergency meeting or anything like that, Amy would have to make that call. We've kicked this around the table four or five times. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Under the circumstances, and with the findings that substantial progress has been made, I would like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
It's a plat approval extension.
I'm sorry, you're right. Consider, of the subdivision plat approval extension request for a six-month period to February 15th, 2025, for the Coleman View Estates, PRUD subdivision located at approximately 30, 5368 South, 1050 West Riverdale, Utah, as requested by Goldcrest Homes LLC, under the condition that all bonding be totally complete and in place before that extension is issued.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Michelle, will you poll the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Henstraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nye? Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and we have your extension.
Thank you kindly, Commissioner.
On that being done.
I, I give you guys my word, I'll do everything to make this happen as swiftly as I can, and I think I appreciate you guys, especially Commissioner Nye for being here.
Good, good luck working through it, hope it goes well.
Thank you kindly. Brendan and I will be in close contact in the following days. I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Mr. Cooper, could we ask that you provide us notification as to when that's complete and what that looks like, so that we can have that confirmation individually as the commissioners?
Yeah, I'll send an email out the day of, so that you get it in real time.
Okay.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item three, public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Title 10, Chapter 25, Development in All Zones and Various Other Title 10 Chapters Affected by Such Amendments. Mr. Cooper?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'll ask Michelle if she wouldn't mind pulling up some of the pages in the packet, and we can just look at the red lines that have been discussed prior to opening the public hearing. So as you recall, we discussed this a couple of times. We discussed the bylaw, the, the commission bylaws originally, and in the bylaws, there were some procedural changes that we elected to change, that was voted on last week, and there's some code implications because of that, and it's related to how you review and approve site plans. Site plans are required on most multifamily residential type of projects, and all commercial projects in general. And so the site plans are important. You review things related to public health and safety, you review things related to how it relates to the general plan specifically in its use, you review things related to the zoning and the land use, and so site plans are important. Previously, we had a two-step site plan process. One was, the first step was preliminary site plan approval, in which you would review, in most cases, an incomplete site plan. A site plan that wasn't finished, that was waiting for your review and waiting for your feedback. By eliminating that step, we just bring to you one site plan, we call it the final site plan, and in doing so, it has gone through the entire city review process. It's been reviewed by the city engineer, myself, the public works director, the fire chief, the police chief, and in some cases, third parties. In other cases, there might be a DRC involved in that, a design review committee, that looks at, looks at elevations and other landscaping and signage considerations. So there's a lot of review in the site plan process, and so in bringing it to you in a single step, it doesn't circumvent any input or any thought or action that you might have, it just streamlines it so that you know that what you're seeing is already something that's been vetted by the city in accordance to the, to the code, and that you are able to still ask questions, still require changes that are within code, all of the same powers and privileges that you had in the preliminary process, you still have in the final process. You can table any action, you can deny any requests, you can approve any request. So this proposed change does affect a number of areas in Riverdale City Code. Chapter 25 is the area in which it's most largely affected, and Michelle, if you wouldn't mind clicking on that one, and, there we go. So this is in your packet, and this is really just the process of redlining the things that are no longer applicable, and adding those, that language that we feel like is applicable and is subject to your consideration tonight. I know you've seen this a number of times, you've read it, so we feel that it does provide a streamlined process without any negative effects of input or influence as a commission. It does provide a more clear and reliable path for our development customers. They now know that as they get an approval from the planning commission, they move right into a city council action, and once that's done, they can move right into permitting and development. And so I think it is better customer service, it's a clear, step-by-step word, you know, language, in terms of how it's written, and that's something that the state mandates us to do, and that is to have clear and concise, easy-to-understand code language, so we've attempted to do that here. There are some other implications in other areas of the code that have reference to the site plan review process. We've attempted to identify those in other various chapters, and there's small references that usually refer back to Chapter 25. I will caveat all this with the notion that these are, th- these are changes that need to be made and are being recommended to you for consideration, but they're not the end-all, be-all. So I anticipate that as we take a more comprehensive trip through our code, we're going to rework this to become even better, but the nucleus of the idea of a single-step site plan review will remain, no matter how we choose to put that forward in a future revision. But I just wanted to let you know that future revisions will come, and they'll be more in-depth and more, I think, more accurate and clear than maybe what we've done on this attempt to just get us one step closer, if that makes sense. So I'll turn the time back to the commission for any questions that you might have had in the few weeks that you've reviewed this.
Shouldn't we real, well, the purpose that we had in you explaining this, and I neglected to say, to explain this for those who may be watching, we don't have any public present, was to be able to have the public be aware of what the purpose was behind this. So I think that we should open the public hearing, we could then close the public hearing, and then have the discussion, and then make the recommendation to the city council from there. So a motion would, having explained this and seeing no public present, we still need to open the meeting, and so do we have a motion to open the public meeting?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Title 10, Chapter 25, Development in All Zones and Various Other Title 10 Chapters Affected by Such Amendments.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, the public hearing is now open, which we would welcome any responses from the pe- public, but seeing none here.
Is there any online? Michelle?
Uh, there's a couple people watching, I don't have any comments.
But you haven't received any statements.
Okay.
Seeing no response from the public, we would have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll say, I get to second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is closed. Now, item 3B is consideration to forward the recommendation to city council for proposed amendments to Title 10, Chapter 25, Development in All Zones and Various Other Title 10 Chapters Affected by Such Amendments. Mr. Cooper, having explained the purpose of this, commissioners, do we have any questions for him or any other discussion that we would like to include at this time?
I think we've thoroughly gone over it, and I think the changes make sense, as we were talking about earlier, like, we've spent a lot of meetings saying, okay, we have this, and there's still some things that need to be done, so we're going to approve it based on those things getting done and just moving it forward, and there's just not a lot of point to that piece of the process. It's a much more smooth and seamless experience doing it this way.
I think for the most part, we're all in agreement with that. So, the next step, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to forward the recommendation to city council for proposed amendments to Title 10, Chapter 25, Development in All Zones and Various Other Title 10 Chapters Affected by Such Amendments.
And that recommendation is?
To forward it to the city council. Oh, favorable, yes, favorable recommendation.
Okay. I'll second that recommendation. I'll second that recommendation. All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Michelle, would you poll the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Henstraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Nye? Forgot to mark her absent on that one. Um, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pulson?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes and that will be forwarded to the city council. All right, um.
I'll ask. But Cooper, at any time that we determine that some of this stuff, I wasn't at your meeting when you discussed all this. So I read through it and I thought, at any time that we feel that the code is not adequate. Can we go back in as a commission, as a group and change it?
Absolutely.
So it isn't something that's set in stone.
Well, the city council is a legislative body, so they actually make the law. But our job together as a commission, as, as staff, is to determine the, the things that are appropriate for uh, the land use of our city. And uh, we can do all kinds of work related to changing codes, making recommendations, um, planning, short-term planning, long-term planning. There's a lot of flexibility there. But ultimately, it's just a recommendation from the commission to the council in most cases.
Cause as I, as I read through that, I thought. I hope we don't put ourselves in a position that we scratch some stuff out in red that we maybe should not have. And maybe we won't know that till.
Till we know.
Till we know. So the situation comes up and causes that problem. And I thought if any of that comes up, hopefully we can go back in and change what we've taken out.
That's right. And that happens on occasion. I, I don't feel like this is one of those occasions because it is a relatively simple change to just a few code sections. But if you think of the code as a living document that is layered over time, there are some discrepancies and some contradictions. And some omissions, lots of things that need to have interpretation by you and myself. Um, and so as we deep dive into the code over the next year. Uh, we're going to hopefully come out of that at the end, correcting a lot of those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Without creating new ones, hopefully.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, item F, comments uh, from the planning commission and city staff. Any items that you would like to address at this time? If any.
I just have a little something, cause I'm not sure what action to take on it. But um, I've been walking my daughter to school in the mornings and I noticed that there are some of our streets where they don't have a ramp on the curb. Is that, how do we go about fixing something like that? Especially where it's on a common walking area to school. There's, there wouldn't be wheelchair access or something like that.
Good question. We'll bring it up to the public works director. I do know that um, there are federal grants constantly that give communities dollars to make those improvements. Um, so. And I do know that not every sidewalk everywhere is required to have them, a- as long as there is another safe path, alternative. Uh, but I'll, I'll bring that up to the director and see what he has to say. If there's a plan for it, I, I'm not quite sure.
These ones are connected to cul-de-sacs, but I just imagine if I was on a wheelchair. And I had to go half a block and then go around a cul-de-sac and then go half a block and then go around a cul-de-sac. That would become a little bit tedious. And I know we have residents of our city that that's their mode of transportation, so.
Is it an older sidewalk or subdivision?
Um, ish.
Okay.
It's on, I think it's 1100 West.
New stuff obviously is required.
Like just under the park.
Well, a couple of years ago, maybe two, three years ago, they came through our area and put most of them those in. I don't know, that's because they got many doors. But not all of them were made. They weren't all done. There were some, but.
And that's what I don't know what the rationale is. Certainly, anything new that's approved today is gonna require those things. But in older subdivisions with older standards, um, they usually are retrofit, like you've seen. But what the rationale of where that money gets put and what sidewalks get retro fit versus others, I'm not quite sure. So I'll have to find out for you.
It was interesting. You, you walk around that subdivision, you'll have a ramp down, you go across the street and then there's no ramp to go up. It's a per curb. And I thought, okay now, should it be ramped down, ramped down, ramped down? But it wasn't, you'd have to go down to the next driveway and come back in if you had a wheelchair. So it wasn't, it's not consistent. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think the other concern too, besides people who are in wheelchairs, would be kids on bikes. As they're riding. If they're riding on the sidewalk, I, I mean, I, I go with my stroller. And I'm tempted to just walk in the street because it gets really old going up and down. I mean, these are big curbs. You know, and if you have kids going to school and riding in the street and parents driving by and dropping their kids off, that's a risk maybe we don't wanna take too.
Yeah, and if you're used to just hitting those ramps consistently and then all of a sudden one curb is a full curb. On a bike or something, then if it's dark, you know, I agree. It's something that um. Is above my pay grade, so I'll have to get you the answer.
Is that something you can forward to our public works? It's Sean Douglas, correct?
Yep.
Um, or did you want me to reach out?
I'll take care of it and then report back to you next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sure Michelle will remind me.
I'd like to say also, Brandon, appreciation for the police department out there at uh, the Utah Military Academy. They now have the blinking red lights they put in over the summer. And that's been a huge help. But they're also there with their police cars watching as well. It's a double protection in my book for the students going back and forth that busy street. And uh, I just wanna shout out to Chief Warren and the police officers for doing that. Cause they're there practically every morning when I, when I go by there. Uh, patrolling with the uh, crossing guard and the lights as well that they've installed. So they've got all kinds of different protections in place this year um, that I think is very nice.
They also have a resource officer.
They do have a resource officer, yeah. They're doing a good job up there, cause it's really a congested area.
It is.
People coming off of Ritter and, and down uh, you know, South Weber and everything clusters right into that area. And they've maintained the traffic well, the flows well. There's a lot of traffic going through there. So just kudos to the police force. We've got a great police force.
And I think they've always been very involved in the schools and made sure that the kids get to school safely, which is appreciated.
And it's been under construction for the last number of weeks with that project. I know they wrapped a lot of it up purposely so that they didn't impede with the school kids. But uh, yeah, we have staff meeting tomorrow, so we'll pass that along to.
I seen Sean Douglas up there with the Coleman Estates. You know, he's been there about every day with people up there. I see the car, I see him up there's truck. And I know they've done a lot of work to get the road cleaned up before.
Right.
The school year, and they did. They're now pushed it all into Coleman Estates now and the roads just got the, you know, the barriers there. But it's a much better than it was.
Right.
A month ago. So kudos to Sean and the staff up there, making sure that's cleaned up.
I'll pass it along.
Appreciate it.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Did you fall? I have no idea. I think I hit the rating when I came up the stairs. And I, I take blood thinner. And that's all it does.
Go up there too?
It's just a shadow.
Just this one.
Your muscles.
I can tell you that, gotten a bite, you shouldn't see the other guy. I would, yes.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty fun to watch. What? We left the work session meeting thinking one thing and I, I realized you were relying upon my interpretation there. But then you were able to listen to Thaddeus. And have a conversation amongst yourselves and consider all the factors. And even though it's not a precedent you want set, it's not, it didn't feel good. Um, and it was kinda contrary to what we just did afterwards. You made a decision based on the facts as they were presented to you and you did, I think, the right thing. So I, I appreciate you letting me be part of that. That was fun.
The only thing I didn't like about it is that, why are we pushing this to the, um, end of the time?
It does seem like that's happening frequently. If we could figure out how to roll that back and. And maybe it's just because of the transition and things will get more smooth as you get going in your position.
I tried to allude to that a little bit without being rude and that is that these guys are notorious, is that off? Okay. These guys are notorious for imposing arbitrary deadlines onto us and then kind of.